Hello, everyone, and welcome to today's program. The first time I interviewed my guest this evening was 25 years ago, when he was running for the California State Assembly. Since then, he has served on the State Assembly, became the first Armenian-American to serve in the Los Angeles City Council, the last two years of which as its president. Please welcome Paul Krikor.
Hi, it's good to be with you.
I wasn't trying to age us, by the way.
No, you haven't aged today.
And you just last Wednesday stepped down as the City Council President. You came into that role at a rather tumultuous time, when your predecessor was caught on tape, really disparaging minorities, including Armenians. What was that like?
Yeah, it was chaos. And it was probably unprecedented chaos in the history of this city. The resignation of then-Council President Martinez in the light of these horrendous recorded conversations that she was involved with, that attracted national attention, led to the President of the United States calling for the resignation of the members involved. It ripped this city apart, and it was a level of racial division that I haven't felt since probably the 1992 riots that we had here. So it was a horrendous time. And it came in the aftermath, by the way, of the criminal indictment of three members or former members of the Los Angeles City Council. So this was a time of unbelievable challenge for this institution to be able to continue to function as a legislative body. And we were struggling even to get a quorum of meetings. And then, when we did, we were struggling to be able to hear each other over the screams of protesters who were in our chambers. So that was the environment in which I became president. And so my first goal was to restore the City Council as a functioning legislative body, and then to begin to regain the confidence of the public in the Los Angeles City Council. And then, third, to ensure that the members of the council were able to represent their constituents in the best possible way. Because if we're all moving forward and succeeding together, if all 15 members are succeeding, then the entire city is succeeding. And I think we've made incredible progress in those two years in turning the page and turning the city around.
I mean, the whole thing is so multi-pronged, as you just explained. And two years is a significantly short time to touch on these mammoth situations. And I think we've come out of it in the right way. But I'm sure there's still work to do.
Oh, there's a... The work of restoring confidence in the City Council or any body of government is never completed. That has to be the charge, the mission, of everyone who's ever elected to office. Because we can only succeed as a democratic society if people have confidence that the people who are representing them are elected fairly and are representing them fairly, and not because of undue influences. So some of the things that we were able to accomplish right away was creating independent redistricting, first of all, which was an extremely important step for Los Angeles to take. First time in 100 years Los Angeles has had that. We passed a package of ethics reforms for the first time since the Los Angeles Ethics Commission was created to increase the commission's independence and influence and power in oversight over elected officials. And then we created a charter reform commission, which will look across the board at all aspects of the Los Angeles City Charter to determine how we can operate more effectively, more efficiently, with greater transparency, and with fewer risks of corruption.
Mayor Karen Bass, last week, called you one of the most consequential public servants. And I think that's a great accolade. And you certainly have been, sitting in front of me, quite consequential with your first election, your first run for California State Assembly. But subsequently, especially on not just bringing Armenian issues to a legislative conclusion, but really drawing the attention to the substance of those issues and mobilizing not just your colleagues and the community, but also the larger scope of the population. The first example that comes to mind, the Centennial, where Los Angeles was just a lit and came together for this commemoration that for us is just our thing. How do you go about doing something like that? And what did that feel like when you saw that 160,000 people?
Well, I very much appreciate those comments, first of all. Thank you. You know, I think when you look at the reasons that it's important to elect people who represent our community to office, there are several. One of them is the ability to have direct personal influence, you know, bringing Armenian issues to legislative bodies. But another is being able to speak to them in a way that brings others along with us. And that's probably even more important. Because it's only by building coalitions with other communities, with other people who may not have a background in our issues that we can really advance as a small diasporic community. And then the third aspect of it is mentorship and making sure that we're giving other people an opportunity to come along and lead within our community. So the Centennial is a great example of those things. First of all, the community deserves all the credit for that incredible accomplishment of bringing over 150,000 people onto the streets of Los Angeles. And they were not all Armenians. We had people from every corner of Los Angeles standing up for our community and standing against genocide and hatred. And it was a beautiful moment in Los Angeles. Now, that being said, the mechanics of something like that are extensive. And without having a person like me in the City Council to be able to make sure that the city government ensured the success of an event like that, it would have been much harder to be able to do something that consequential. And then, in addition to the Centennial March, of course, I seized the moment to do a number of other things of permanent significance. Like, we, in honor of the Centennial, we planted 100 pomegranate trees across Los Angeles in every council district of Los Angeles with permanent monuments to the genocide in every council district. Now, many of those districts are places where they don't think a lot about Armenian issues. But forever, people are now going to go, sit in the shade of those pomegranate trees, read that plaque, and learn something about the genocide. So finding opportunities like that to educate others, I think, is really important.
I mean, I was also part of the committee that put together the march. And I completely appreciate the mechanics, as you talk about it. But for people who just saw the march or took part in it, there was this other level where the entire city was on this mission. From City Hall being lit in the violet color to the bus things, to the lamp postings. I mean, that was just... One thing for me was when I walked into a Bank of America and every teller was wearing the flower. It was very important. But one of the most moving things and critical things that you have done is Artsakh. Right now, as we look back to all of the battles that you fought as a City Council member and as a California State Assembly person, and we look at what's happening right now, I think the issue is more resonant in our citizens and our residents here in Los Angeles than perhaps anywhere else. Take us through that journey.
Yeah, well, I've long felt that if there's anything that's even more important than marking and commemorating the Armenian genocide, it is preventing future Armenian genocides. And Artsakh has been front and center. The heroic people who declared their independence against the Soviet Union and against the Soviet Republic of Azerbaijan and set out for self-determination and created a model for democracy in that part of the world. They are heroes of democracy every bit as much as our own founders of this country. And I, throughout my career, have tried to express that to the American audience so that Americans of all stripes would see Artsakh as their cause. And so that's why we worked so hard, you know, in the state legislature, as well as in the council, to ensure appropriate recognition of the sovereignty of Artsakh, to build the kinds of relationships with other communities that would support Artsakh, to provide material support to Artsakh as well. We did all of those things. And then, of course, when the war began, we rallied some of those people, influential people that we had built those relationships with, to speak out. It's tragic that all of those efforts didn't produce better results in the end. But they're not in vain. Doing those things still creates a sense of what is right and what is wrong that continues, even though Artsakh has been depopulated of its indigenous population, its indigenous Armenian population. Those claims for entitlement to those lands do not go away. And that has to be a continuing dialogue that we continue to fight for. So again, being in a seat like I had gave us an opportunity to be able to create a level of influence that maybe we wouldn't have had otherwise. You mentioned Mayor Bass. She immediately understood the importance of this. And she and I were able to reach out directly to the Biden administration. We were able to set meetings in Washington with high-level members of the State Department and the National Security Council to talk about these issues and to press our case. I wish those had borne more fruit. But if our voices are not being heard in those channels, we will be ignored completely. And the pressure that comes from oil wealth will be the only consideration, instead of also considering what's right and what's just.
And it's also important that within these events and movements, the issue of the Armenian genocide, it's an issue of a crime against humanity, as you put it. The issue of Artsakh is an issue of the right to self-determination. And these are things, I think, that people can understand. It's just, it's happening so in their faces and during a global pandemic, no less, the whole thing happened. Of course, there was Friendship City with Shuji, which I had a chance to go and visit the square in Shuji. And that takes a lot to bring people to stand up for something like that. Since we are on the topic of Artsakh, and you said those things were not in vain, what do you think we should do now that we are in this situation as a nation?
Well, I think we need to continue to press the case based on self-determination, which is a concept that people readily understand, that this was an indigenous population that, under Soviet dominance of the Soviet empire, stood up and declared their independence. And there's always this give and take in foreign policy between the right to self-determination and the sanctity of borders, right? And internationally-accepted borders. Well, you know, the so-called internationally-accepted borders were drawn by Stalin and were enforced by the Soviet Union. And to me, that has very little significance when weighed against the millennia-long claim of an indigenous population to its own self-governance. And so I think we need to continue to press that issue. But also, we need to continue to make sure that others come along with us and feel that that is their issue as well. You know, whether it's other nations of people, other groups that are similarly situated, whether it's Christians who care about the ancient cultural heritage of Artsakh and the Christian heritage there, we need to continue to build those allies and continue to make this something that's current. There's no fait accompli that should be recognized by the international community just because a brutal, corrupt dictator decided that now is the moment to roll his tanks. All of the issues that we've talked about, that the Minsk group has talked about, that countries have been negotiating over for decades, all of those issues are still before the community. The fact that the population has been brutally, violently uprooted from their homes shouldn't take those issues of justice off the table.
There is also this sentiment and sense of defeat among the community. In October 2020, there was this other protest right as the war was happening. There was another hundred or so thousand people who came in front of the Turkish consulate. And there was this excitement that, as the saying went at the time, "Hak del ueng", we're going to win. But the end of the war and the consequences have pretty much made the community feel defeated and not inclined to participate and do anything. What do you say to that? How do they come out of that kind of, I want to say, stossism, maybe?
It's understandable, and it's human. And I felt as crestfallen as anybody. You mentioned Los Angeles-Shuji friendship relationship. The people of Shuji created the Los Angeles-Shuji Friendship Park. And my family and I commemorated the creation of that park. You know, we celebrated that moment with them. And to think of that being desecrated by Azeri tanks, to think of the sculpture garden behind it being destroyed by military violence, yeah. It is painful, and it is easy to feel defeated. And we, as a people, as an Armenian nation, can never allow ourselves that luxury. We never have in the past. You know, when you have a population that has, throughout most of its existence, lived as a diasporic nation under the conquest of empires, and we have continued on to secure the sanctity of our ancient culture and held together as a people, survived a genocide, survived Soviet domination, built new Armenias in countries around the world, wherever we go. That is not a nation that should ever accept defeat because of a setback. We have to take the longer view of history and realize that, over the course of time, we survive and we flourish.
And I think also to make a note of not making the same mistakes as we've had in history. I think that's very important to do that. I want to come back to the city. You became a City Councilman in 2010, right? How has the city changed?
Well, it's been a roller coaster ride. In 2010, when I joined the council, the city and the state and the entire country was still reeling from the Great Recession and the international, global economic collapse. And the city was teetering on the precipice of bankruptcy. We were talking about massive layoffs of employees. And we were able to recover that from that. Soon after I joined the council, I was appointed Chair of the Budget Committee for the city. And we were able to not only rebuild the city's finances and budget, but we were able to avoid layoffs and build the strongest financial reserve we've ever had in the city's history. So that was a huge recovery from a very dark moment. And it's, you know, people tend to forget now, but just five or six years ago, this city was booming in every respect. Breaking all records for transportation in and out of our airport, cargo shipped through the L.A. ports, breaking all records. The number of business starts and grocery receipts from our businesses, booming through the roof, record-breaking. And then COVID hit. And all of that ground to an immediate halt. And so it has very much been a roller coaster ride of downtimes with really successful times, and then downtimes again. And now we're hopefully on the upswing back again. I think our city is still more fragmented than it was 10 or 15 years ago. But we've also been through those times in the past, and we've recovered from them. So I think that some of the work that we've done on the council has helped to heal a lot of the wounds that we talked about earlier that had been caused or exacerbated by what happened on those tapes. We now have the most diverse council in the history of the city. And we're working together, despite significant policy differences and differences in our districts and so on. We're working together to try to move the city forward as a whole.
One of the issues, and you and I have spoken about this issue a couple of times, that is front and center for everyone in Los Angeles is the homeless crisis. How do we go about dealing with such a weird situation for a city like Los Angeles?
So homelessness is, of course, not a city of Los Angeles issue. It is a national issue. We have probably a disproportionate share of the national problem in Los Angeles, in part because people who are homeless in someplace like Ann Arbor, Michigan, are not going to get through a winter. So they tend to come to warmer climates like Los Angeles. So that's part of the reason. It is going to take an all-hands-on-deck response. People should not see the city government of Los Angeles as the entity primarily responsible for solving this problem. Because we aren't, and we can't. The county of Los Angeles, for example, is responsible for health care, for mental health care, for substance abuse issues. For poverty reduction, those are all issues of the county. Now, the city has worked very aggressively towards increasing our housing stock and especially expediting the production of affordable housing. And those are areas that can help prevent homelessness from happening in the first place. When it comes to the response to the unsheltered on the streets, there are widely divergent views, philosophical views, about how this should happen. Some think you should just sweep through and arrest them all and move them someplace else. Some think you shouldn't do anything. People should have the ability to sleep on the streets if they don't have any other alternative. I've taken a little bit more of what I think is a balanced view by saying there are certain areas and conditions in which encampments will be prohibited because they are unsafe for the people living there as well as the surrounding community. And we're not going to tolerate it. And so I wrote amendments to what we call Municipal Code Section 4118, which creates areas that you cannot have encampments, and we can respond to it, you know, like that. On the other hand, we've also invested in shelter in my district. We've built hundreds of new beds of temporary shelter for people who are living unhoused. We've built permanent supportive housing. We built a homeless services navigation center, first one in the city, which is a drop-in center where people who are homeless or about to become homeless can go for services. So those combined approaches of saying, here's your opportunity to get off the streets. Here are the resources that are being made available to you. But on the other hand, if you don't, we're going to have to not allow you to live on the streets. If you do both of those things, it can be a real solution. And that's why we've seen such a significant reduction in unsheltered homelessness in my district and across the city.
And our city certainly has an exciting couple of years ahead of it with the World Cup, the Super Bowl, and finally, the Olympics coming up. Are we ready for those big events?
Well, you know, I spent the Olympics in Paris from the beginning to the end of the Olympics. And talking to my counterparts in the Paris City Government was reassuring to me because I think they probably felt like they weren't very well-prepared going a few years out. But they managed to oversee a phenomenal Olympic Games, which uplifted Paris and put them in such a beautiful light. And it was a tremendous success by all accounts. And I think we're in the same boat. We certainly have a lot to do. And I think everyone is mindful of the magnitude of that task. But I also remember 1984. And people had concerns about the 1984 Olympics, and they were afraid it was going to be massive congestion and that there was going to be cost overruns and there was going to be air pollution. And people had all kinds of concerns. And it was a golden moment in the history of Los Angeles. And it put us on the world stage in a way that nothing else had done. It had such extraordinarily positive financial impacts that we're still benefiting today from the 1984 Olympics. We have youth programs in the city that are funded today by the 1984 Olympics. And I'm convinced that the 2028 Games will be a similar success.
And I think it should act as a kind of catalyst for the city to come together. Because at the end of the day, it is our home, and we're playing host. And when you invite someone to your house, you don't want it to be messy, right?
Exactly. It's an opportunity for us to really step up, show Los Angeles to the world in the best possible light, which will have long-term benefits long after the 28 Games are over. And as you say, to come together as a city in common purpose to show that we can do big things in Los Angeles. We always have. This is the place that people come to from around the world to fulfill their dreams, to do the next big thing. That happens in Los Angeles. And the 2028 Games gives us an opportunity to demonstrate that we're still that place.
I think we should all work together. I want to come back to something very important that you pointed out earlier in our program. And that is the importance of mentoring and making sure that there are people who are continuing to raise the awareness, fight the fight. How has that worked? I mean, how do you see that has progressed in the last 25 years?
Well, you remember how it was in the late 1990s. Many of your viewers may be at an age that they don't have a clear recollection of that. And they think that things have always been the way they are now for the Armenian community. And trust me, they weren't. And in the '80s and the '90s, you know, many of us saw, well, we have significant waves of immigration still coming in. The number of people that are coming, especially to the Los Angeles area, very much increasing. They were starting to register and become citizens. But we had very little voice in the public space. And it was really that cycle of the 2000 election. Rafi Menukyan got elected to the council in Glendale. I had my campaign, my first campaign for the State Assembly, which turned out I didn't win. But I still consider that campaign to be a phenomenal... win, but I still consider that campaign to be a phenomenal success. Because it was the moment when a lot of our young people first saw that they could have a future in American democracy, where our voters first felt motivated to actually go out and vote because they could see an Armenian name on the ballot, somebody who came to their door. And not me, but, you know, my volunteers who were coming, teenagers coming to their doors, speaking to them in multiple languages, in Armenian, in Farsi, and, you know, and so on. And so they understood then the importance of getting involved in voting, and we still see the benefit of that today because in each election cycle since then, this community has become more and more empowered. And some of those teenagers who were knocking on doors for me are now in significant positions of influence. And, you know, one of my volunteers then, and who became my chief of staff, went on to serve 10 years in the State Assembly, Adrin Nazarian, and hopefully he will be taking the mantle from me and be elected to the city council.
In November, yeah. Forty days left. One of the other projects that you started, and it's going to have a great impact in our city and your district, is the Tumo Center. Any updates on that?
So again, a huge thank you to then Assembly Member Adrin Nazarian, who was able to ensure over $20 million in state funding for the Tumo Center. And we were able to work closely with him. And again, this is, this is what happens when you have people in the right positions. They can work together for a common purpose. So we were able to expedite processing through the city. We were able to get several million more dollars in funding from the city so that together with the state funding, we will have a Tumo Center, the first one in the United States, in North Hollywood, which will be a, you know, a lasting benefit for this community for generations to come. And anybody who's seen the Tumo Center in Yerevan or any of the other Tumo Centers, which are now around the world, know what a life-changing impact this has on young people who get an opportunity for STEM education that they might not otherwise have, who can be, have direct relationships with some of the leaders of, you know, the creative industries and the tech industries throughout the world, and they get to actually engage with people like this. And that's what's helping to create, you know, a lot of the economic renaissance in Armenia around tech and media. But it also is life-changing for young people around the world who get the benefit of this. And so where better than in North Hollywood, where, you know, they have direct access to, you know, so much of the tech industry that's a big part of LA's economy, as well as, of course, we're the global entertainment center as well. So it's, it's going to be an enormous contribution to this city and to our community.
And it's important to note that it's, programs are open to everyone.
Everybody.
There seems to be a misconception that it's going to be like Armenians only, but...
It's open to everybody, totally free. And this is, by the way, the first time, I think, that any Tumo Center has actually been, been granted the building in which it will be operating. So they'll be able to save all of that fundraising expense to be able to use for operations.
Talk about all the good stuff that has also happened in the NoHo district, thanks to your efforts, that that area is kind of bustling right now. I used to live in North Hollywood, and I can see the difference. What's next for Paul Krikorian?
Well, there's a lot of, I've been going through a lot of thinking about that, and there are some discussions involved. I, I don't see an immediate elected office that I would be running for. As you know, I, you know, considered two opportunities to run for the Congress in the last couple of years, including Adam Schiff's seat, which he's vacating to run for Senate. And I thought long and hard about that because it's a seat that's critically important to our community, of course, and it, it was important to ensure that we continue to have that voice. But I just felt that the timing was such, even though it was something that I had wanted to do for a very long time, the timing, given the chaos of the city council that you had described earlier, was something that I just couldn't do because I had just become council president, and I couldn't devote my attention elsewhere when the city needed my full attention right then. And so, so I turned down that opportunity. There may be an office at some point in the future. I won't rule that out. But one thing that I'm certain about is I'll continue to be fully involved in public discourse. I'll continue to find ways that I can serve the public and the Armenian community. And that may be in, in government, it may be in another capacity, but, but I'm not quitting.
Will you be taking a long vacation with your family?
We'll be taking a vacation. Not sure how long it'll be, but...
Well, before you close, do you have anything that I might have missed, a message to our community?
Yeah, I guess you touched upon a lot of the points that I try to remind people of a lot, but I'm, I just, as I'm getting to this point in my career, I just want to say, first of all, how grateful I am for, you know, a quarter of a century of support from this community. You know, when I first decided to run for office, when I, you know, was elected to the Burbank School Board, when I was elected to the Assembly and elected to the council, it was always with such enthusiastic and effective support from the Armenian community, which I'm very grateful for personally. But I'm also grateful for that level of engagement just as an American citizen and an Armenian American citizen. Because continuing that kind of engagement is absolutely imperative for our community. So I may be stepping out of elected office now, but it's really important that our community continue to move forward, to further empower ourselves in the democratic process. And I hope to continue to be a part of that. And I think that's the best antidote to what you described earlier, is that sense of defeat that we may have in some areas. The best answer to that is to step up, pick up the level of the fight, get more involved, get more engaged so that we don't have defeats in the future.
Because the stakes are higher, and I hope those coming up will, you know, reach out to you to seek your advice and resources. I think that'll be important. Los Angeles City Council President Emeritus, Paul Krikorian, thank you very much. I'm sure this is not going to be the last time we're going to talk on this, in this studio. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you.
Thank you all for watching. You know, there's, November 5th is right around the corner. If you haven't registered to vote, please do so. And early voting starts very soon, I believe, next week, in a few weeks.
First week of October.
Okay, yeah. Well, thank you for joining us. Have a good evening. Good night.
Good night.